The November 4th meeting of the Paducah Planning Commission and URCDA to order, and would ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance by standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. Before we get started with the calling of the roll, I do want to announce that previously noted a action on 3654 Drury Lane was listed, but that has been pulled from the agenda. So if anyone is here for that property, I will relieve yourself from attending. Now, Mr. Summers, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ben Barry.
Here.
Commissioner Carmen.
Here.
Commissioner Griffin.
Here.
Commissioner Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Morrison.
Here.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Here.
Chairman Wade.
Here.
Our first order of business is the September 5th minutes. We did not have a meeting in October, so we will reach back to the September minutes. And Commissioner Carmen, I believe you have those.
Yes. I move that the reading of the minutes for September 5th, 2024 be waived and the minutes of said meeting be as prepared by the staff be approved as written.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes as prepared by staff? Hearing none. Mr. Summers, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Carmen.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffin.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
Aye.
Commissioner Morrison.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Ben Barry.
Aye.
Chairman Wade.
Aye. All right, we have no new URCDA petitions. We do have one planning commission item that is on the table, and no new action on that, so it will remain on the table.
To add to that, Chairman Wade, they have been notified this is the last meeting before they roll off.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And as we get into our planning commission new petitions, the first one up is 510 North Fourth Street. And Commissioner Griffith, I believe you have the motion. Well, first off, excuse me, Mr. Summers, would you give the report on that?
Thank you, Chairman Wade.
Old habits die hard.
This is a proposed rezoning from R4 High Density Residential to B3 General Business at 510 North Fourth Street. This is a triangular, irregular shaped piece of property between Harrison and the Loop and across the street from the new hotel. The petitioners would like to utilize the property for a proposed restaurant or coffee shop, which would be a support service for the new aloft hotel that's forthcoming. If there was any structures on this property, they were raised approximately in 1975 whenever the Loop was put in, and would further be a support service to the existing Holiday Inn and the other commercial developments as well. Staff is supportive of the B3 zone primarily because of setbacks. The B3 zone doesn't have any setbacks, whereas if a B1 zone was applied to the property, the buildable area would be 50.93% less than what could be built on now. So therefore, B3 zone would help to maximize the building of the site. Staff feels the R4 zone is inappropriate for this lot due to traffic congestion, vehicular noise, and the other side effects that can come from a lot of traffic coming and going both ways. The lot is too small for most R4 uses, which would be single-family homes, multifamily, bed and breakfast, assisted living, things of that nature, which requires more of a spacious lot. The future land use map shows the parcel to be neighborhood conservation. However, there has been changes of an economic, social, and physical character in the area, namely the new Holiday Inn that was constructed approximately in 2016. In addition to that, the Trout General Store was constructed in 2015, and the Respite was constructed in 2008. And all of those was constructed after the adoption of the previous comprehensive plan. And additionally, of course, the new hotel will be located across the street. So the petitioners are here, Mr. Chairman, so I'd like to turn it back over to you for the public hearing.
First off, we'll entertain the motion, which I believe Commissioner Griffith has.
I move that this commission recommend approval to the Board of Commissioners and adopt a resolution recommending approval thereof of the requested map amendment from R4 High Density Residential Zone to B3 General Business Zone for property located at 510 North Fourth Street. I further move this commission adopt the following findings of fact in support of said recommendation. One, the existing R4 zone is inappropriate for this lot. Two, the size and shape of the lot is not conducive to residential land uses. Three, the size and shape of the lot is not conducive to other principally permitted uses in the R4 zone. For the site is located between two major arterials, vehicular traffic and associated noise are not conducive to any residential land use or other principal use in the R4 zone. Five, major changes of economic, physical, or social nature have occurred in the area. Six, the Holiday Inn, Trout General Store, and the Respite were all constructed since the last comprehensive plan was adopted. Seven, it is unreasonable to expect the general area to develop into commercial uses over time as opposed to residential uses. Eight, two major arteries form the north and south boundaries of the site. Nine, the site is adjacent to the B3 zone on the eastern edge, therefore spot zoning is negated. Ten, the site is intended to provide support services to the new hotel across North Loop Road. Eleven, any new business would also provide food or services to the existing surrounding land uses such as the existing Holiday Inn and the commercial strip center next door. Twelve, only two single-family homes are adjacent to the site. Thirteen, the B3 zone has no yard setback as opposed to the B1 zone. If the B1 zone were applied, the building land area would decrease by 50.93%. Since the lot is small and irregular shape, the B3 zone would help maximize the usage of the lot. And fourteen, the requirements to change the zone classifications as outlined in KRS 100.213A and B have been met. Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. This is a public hearing, so anyone who has comments on this action would ask that you come to the podium, identify yourself, and speak positively or negatively.
Hi, good evening. My name is Patrick Perry. I'm a resident in the affected area and received a letter in the mail. I'm at 509 North Fourth Street, so I'm right across from it. I know it's not in the purview of this board, but I know there's in a long-term study and plan by the Kentucky Department of Transportation that was posted on the City of Paducah's website. They had a possible plan for a roundabout. It wouldn't overlap on this parcel. It would be more to the north. But if that idea could be discussed with the appropriate individuals, that might help with the next, not only this development of this parcel, but also the other one that will be discussed, because there will be an increased amount of traffic there. There is a stoplight there on one end, but when they build the new hotel and I'm kind of, because both of these are beside each other, that may increase traffic coming down Harrison, depending on how Google Maps may route people. So I guess in a nutshell, I don't know if they'll, you know, it would cost millions for the state to build a roundabout, but they did build some traffic calming bumpouts at the corner of Fourth and Kentucky. And I think that was due to fatality about three years ago. So it's something to consider. The other thing, too, on the, I don't know if staff could enlighten me, but I think they have some kind of new ordinances that Johnston Perkins helped with trees. So I know there's one mature tree on the one currently being voted on, and I think on the other parcel that might be three or four mature trees, so.
Sure, I'd be glad to talk about that.
I'm going to sit down. I don't have any other comments or anything.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
That ordinance has been to the Planning Commission, as y'all may recall, or most of y'all in the Planning Commission. It was adopted at some point early this year, but it is yet to go to the Board of Commissioners, so it is not in effect of law yet. But we're working through that to get that to the Board of Commissioners.
But there is currently a tree ordinance that might apply to this?
We amended the landscape ordinance earlier this year, so there's already a landscape ordinance in place, but the new provisions of it that we approved have not been enacted and are not current ordinance.
Right, so this would fall under the existing ordinance?
Only to the extent that new trees or landscaping must be planted with however many parking spaces they're going to be placed on the site.
Anyone else?
I've got a question.
Okay, from the public, we're still in the public hearing, so anyone else wish to speak? Not asking questions, but providing comment.
I think that tree is actually on city property. It's in between the sidewalk and the street.
Is the tree, this tree is not on this lot?
It's kind of hanging off the street, so you're eventually going to have to deal with that anyway.
Right. We have to keep discussion on this particular zone request specific to this lot, and that tree is not on this lot.
Yes, and to the 14 points that are mentioned by staff. All right, anyone else? Last call? All right, we'll conclude the public hearing. Now, any questions of the commission, of staff, or anyone else prior to this?
And this may be too many feet up in the air, but with the second hotel and increased traffic, is the state highway, they said like, yeah, we're not interested in this piece of property, or is there any plan, like they're going to put a, some type of turnway or anything? Are they in this process?
They have been in contact with the state with potential new ingress egress onto North Loop. That's a conversation that they're having internally with the state. I don't know if that plan has been finalized, but we do also anticipate at least one ingress egress off a city street, either Executive Boulevard or Harrison Street.
Okay. I guess I was, I mean, I think you're exactly right. I mean, this is not a residential piece of property. I've sort of smiled all week about who would be silly enough to build a house in there. But I guess I sort of wonder, and maybe Jeff couldn't even speak to this, is that, so you've got two hotels across the street, you're building a restaurant. And this may not be an appropriate time, but how does the customer, not everybody drives a car.
Well, that.
Will there be crosswalks? Is there?
That's what I was going to ask.
You know, I mean, street line, could there be stop signals at Harrison, at Third, and Harrison at Fourth? Will there be crosswalks? Will there be?
I know that's probably the state.
State purview.
Yes.
So we don't have any, okay.
But I did want to bring it up regardless, and I appreciate Mr. Rhodes also bringing it up.
Right. The new hotel, they are just in preliminary design. Things may change over time, and exactly what that looks like with the state and those interfaces with the traffic is something that we'll know more when we receive an official site plan, but we're not to that point.
I mean, occasionally, I've walked over just to the Holiday Inn, and to get there from Lower Town, it's a challenge. I mean, it's, because there are no crosswalks, there are no traffic centers, nothing. I mean, and I would hope that we would push that along to be a walkable community. We need to be.
I recognize that there's some spillover between the proposed hotel and what happens here, but this is just what happens here for this point, and we appreciate the development, or at least I appreciate the development in downtown. Any other questions by commissioners? Comments? Mr. Summers, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Griffin.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
Aye.
Commissioner Morrison.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Ben Barry.
Aye.
Commissioner Carmen.
Aye.
Chairman Wade.
Aye. All right, our next item is 2855 Broadway, and that has to do with a proposed sign. And for the staff report, Mr. Summers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to pass one of these around, which the petitioners' professional representative just handed off to me. Mr. Strickland, if you want to pass this. But this is for a nine-square-foot sign on the campus of the Broadway Church of Christ at 2855 Broadway. This is a wayfinding sign for the offices, the gymnasium, and it is in the definition of a campus sign within the City of Paducah zoning ordinance that the Planning Commission can approve signs on a campus that's at least three acres. And this sign is proposed to be internally lit at the end of the sidewalk that you can see from the Jefferson Street view. The petitioners' professional representative is here, Mr. Strickland, answer any questions that you may have.
Want to have any questions? All right. Mr. Summers, would you call the roll, please?
We need it. Moved and.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're.
Need to read it.
And who did I ask? Commissioner Taylor did that.
I move that this commission approve a nine-square-foot campus sign to be located on the campus of Broadway Church of Christ at 2855 Broadway.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? All right, Mr. Summers, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Taylor.
Aye.
Commissioner Morrison.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Ben Barry.
Aye.
Commissioner Carmen.
Aye.
Commissioner Griffin.
Aye.
Chairman Wade.
Aye. All right, our next item is 519 North Third Street regarding a proposed rezoning from R4 Medium High Density Residential to B3 General Business Zone. Mr. Summers, would you report on that for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the proposed rezoning for the new aloft hotel. This site has always had a commercial use of some sort that has been taking place on it back in the 70s. I believe it was a parking lot for the old Lourdes complex, and then more recently, it was a nursing home that was raised in approximately late 2015. The site is surrounded by B3 zoning on the north, east, and west, so there is no spot zoning that would go along with this. And there's a little bit of a historical thought that went into this. The Holiday Inn was rezoned from R4 to B3 in approximately 2015 or 2016. The new hotel would be four stories and contain 121 rooms. Staff is supportive of the B3 zone because it allows the hotel to operate as a principally permitted use as opposed to a conditional permitted use. If it was a conditional permitted use, if there was any major changes, it would have to go back and forth to the Board of Adjustment, whereas this allows them greater flexibility in design and working directly with planning, engineering, and fire prevention. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, I will turn it back over to you for the public hearing.
All right. Prior to that, we'll introduce the motion, which I believe Commissioner Rhodes has.
Correct. I move that this commission recommend approval to the Board of Commissioners and adopt a resolution recommending approval thereof of the requested map amendment from R4 High Density Residential Zone to B3 General Business Zone for property located at 519 North Third Street. I further move this commission adopt the following findings of fact in support of said recommendation. Number one, the proposed B3 zone would be in compliance with the City of Paducah's comprehensive plan. Number two, the lot is shown as commercial on the future land use map. Number three, the Holiday Inn located across Executive Boulevard was rezoned from R4 to B3 there by setting an historical precedence for this type of rezoning in 2015 or 2016. This hotel can quickly and easily access downtown Paducah and Lower Town Historic District by vehicle, vehicular, or means on foot with a little help. The new larger hotel would strengthen the city's convention center by providing additional rooms for larger conventions. The convention center is approximately 521 feet away. The site adjacent to the B3 zone on three sides, therefore spot zoning is negated. The new hotel would help to spur other investment in the immediate area and in the larger downtown area. This site has historically been utilized as a commercial use beginning with the Lourdes Hospital complex in the 1970s.
Second.
Moved and seconded. This is going to involve a public hearing, which I now open. So does anyone wish to come speak positively or negatively as to this request? If so, please approach the podium and identify yourself.
My name is Patrick Perry. I live at 509 North Fourth, which is across from the proposed area. Received a letter in the mail. I noticed on the, this is from the MAP GIS, does zoning on a parcel extend from the middle of the street property line?
Typically, yes.
Okay. Again, same comment again, but I thought I needed to carry it forward from the other one. The, on the states, because it does, because zoning does, if I'm understanding, zoning does go to the middle of the street?
Typically, yes.
So again, I wanted to mention about the roundabout because part of the possible design that the state had talked about was turning Third and Fourth back into two-way, bidirectional on both. And if they did that, that would be on the area that's being zoned. So it would be connected to this issue because North Third would be within that zoning area. So, and also the street on Harrison. So I just wanted to mention again about, I'm not against it. I think it's a great idea for both developments. I'm not against them. I'm very positive for the development. But because the zoning does extend down to the middle of the street, if possible, if it could be relayed up to collaboration with the state to make sure there's no danger to the public, whether it's through calming bumpouts, because there really is a need to, I know when they developed, brought the Greenway Trail back to Jefferson, there was a lot of talk, and also in the historic long-term planning to connect Lower Town back to the flood wall, because it's dangerous in there to get across there, and it probably will increase. And so, like I said, the way I'm saying this is related is because those streets will run in the zoning area. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Perry, can I ask you something?
Yes.
We all drive these streets as well as you do.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We all live here. Are you looking at something on the state with the state?
Well, it was on, yes, but it was, this thing that I got off was, it was on the transportation.kentucky website, but it also was on the paducah, the paducah kentucky.gov website, which I downloaded in 2001.
Okay, so it's.
Which was probably a repost of what the state had done about the roundabout study and the bidirectional possibility.
I just thought I'd save a step. I'll look it up, but thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
All right, hearing done. We'll consider this public hearing closed. And commissioners, do you have any questions, comments on this action?
All right, hearing done. Mr. Summers, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Ben Barry.
Aye.
Commissioner Carmen.
Aye.
Commissioner Griffin.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
Aye.
Commissioner Morrison.
Aye.
Chairman Wade.
Aye. All right, our next item involves 2800 Jefferson and 2807 Broadway. And this also is a rezoning from, in this case, from R1 Low Density Residential, R3 Medium Density Residential with a potential for a bed and breakfast short-term rental pursuant to KRS 100. So, Mr. Summers, would you start us off with the staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a petition that does have two parts, the rezoning and also the conditional use request pursuant to KRS 100.202 subsection 2. And I'll speak to the rezoning first. The two lots in question, 2800 Jefferson Street and 2807 Broadway, are joined together in this rezoning petition, and they do touch the R3 zone to the north. The reason for the rezoning is that the petitioners would like to utilize 2807 Broadway as a short-term rental or bed and breakfast. So in order to do that, as opposed to a special event, short-term rental, they have to rezone to a zone that allows that to happen in perpetuity or as they may decide. As of right now, staff is supported of the rezoning request based on location. North 28th Street is very busy, running from Jackson Street all the way to Park Avenue, and also Baptist Health Hospital is one of the county's most major employers. So there is a large amount of traffic that goes through there. So it is conceivable to imagine that a higher intensity use would be most appropriate for this area of town. The proposal itself is for guests to use the property as an Airbnb or VRBO or bed and breakfast for event space such as baby showers, bridal showers, and things of that nature. The house itself was built in 1929 and has four rentable rooms, and innkeeper would live on the site in perpetuity. And there are two driveways and parking areas on the site. The site could accommodate up to 16 cars on the east and west parking areas. There is no specific guest demographic in mind, but guests that stay there that want to have an event do have to rent rooms prior to and maintain those through the event. The location is not within a residential subdivision. As we had mentioned previously, there is quite a large buffer with the Broadway Church of Christ down Broadway to those other homes. There's one across the street. There's easy vehicular access to this site, and the site is centrally located to shopping, dining, and entertainment in downtown Paducah, South Side, and in the regional trade center. dining, and entertainment in downtown Paducah, South Side, and in the regional trade center. I believe the petitioners are here, yes. The petitioners are here to answer any further questions that you may have, and I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman, for the public hearing.
All right. Commissioner Ben Barry, I believe you have the motion on this?
Yes. I move that the commission recommend approval to the Board of Commissioners and adopt a resolution recommending approval thereof, the requested map amendment from R1 Low Density Residential Zone to R3 Medium Density Residential Zone for property located at 2800 Jefferson Street and 2807 Broadway. I further move this commission adopt the following findings of fact in support of said recommendations. The two lots proposed to the B rezone are the only single-family homes east of Broadway Church of Christ in this block. Broadway Church of Christ would serve as a buffer between the two lots and single-family homes to the west. These lots are located on major collector's streets, namely North 28th, Broadway, and Jefferson. The site is across from the street from Jefferson Street Fountain Avenue Historical District. The area has relatively high traffic counts as opposed to local collector's streets. North 28th Street had a traffic count of 11,999 vehicles a day in 2021. Jefferson Street had 6,681 vehicles a day in 2023, and Broadway had 6,531 vehicles a day in 2021. R3 Medium Density Residential Zone is located adjacent to this site, therefore spot zoning would be negated. The location of these two lots, by way and nature of the adjacent multifamily complex, Baptist Health and Broadway Church of Christ would be more conducive to a higher intensity use than single-family residential use. The petitioner's proposal maintains the historic character of the home while providing guests an opportunity to stay in a central location for longer periods of time than a special event, short-term rental. B1 zoning is located across North 28th Street, wherein retail, restaurant, bank, office, and like uses could be located as principal permanent uses. The R1 zone is typically found in areas that has a higher density of homes and lots. The site is not in a residential subdivision. I further move that this commission approve the conditional use request for a short-term rental or bed and breakfast to be located in the R3 Medium Density Residential Zone at 2807 Broadway. Further move that the approval be based on the following findings of fact. The site has convenient ingress and egress to North 28th Street and Broadway, both of which are major collector's streets. The site has convenient ingress and egress to Jefferson Street, another major collector's street. The site is not within a residential subdivision. The site is on the edge of the existing low-density residential zone. The Broadway Church of Christ would buffer the site from the single-family homes further down Broadway. Baptist Health Hospital and two churches are located in the vicinity of the site, which minimizes an entirely residential character. The number of guests will be limited to no more than eight at a time, not including children under 12. The site is centrally located within the city of Paducah, giving guests easy access to shopping, dining, and entertainment in the downtown area, South Side Paducah, and regional trade center. The site is across North 28th Street from Jefferson Street Fountain Avenue Historical District. Other City of Paducah Historic Districts, Historic Districts are nearby, affording guests a unique cultural experience, and the driveway contains sufficient parking for up to 16 vehicles between the parking areas.
Second.
Moved and seconded. This will also be a public hearing, so we'll begin that and start the public hearing and ask anyone who has comments or con against this to approach the podium and identify themselves and speak.
My name is Charles Ransler. I live at 2830 Broadway, which is across the street, kind of county-cornered. You know, I think our concern is, but that, you know, whatever residences are left there, and I don't know if you recall going down Broadway, there were three or four older homes, ours being the oldest there, and this, and probably the use of this as a B and B would not be, be that objectional, objectionable, excuse me. But does this permit, as I understand it, R3 would permit a multifamily that in the future someone could come and without any further ado, build a multifamily structure there as opposed to just a single-family home? Is that with R3?
No, they would have to get a conditional use permit.
Okay.
At that point, meaning the neighbors would have to be notified.
All right.
And depending on the layout, they may have to modify the site if it was go to multifamily or something like that. But the only things that's principally permitted in the R3 zone is single-family and two-family, which is the exact same as the R1, just there is a little bit longer list of things that could happen in the R3 that would take an additional layer of approval.
Okay. And that approval would become before this commission?
It would go to the Board of Adjustment, which is a sister board to the Planning Commission that specifically handles variances, conditional use permits, and other, and a few other things that state law gives them the purview over.
Okay. And we would be notified as we were this time?
The adjacent property owners, yes.
Okay. All right. And R2 does not apply? Why would we go from R1 to R3?
It does not touch R2.
Okay.
In order to shy away from what we call spot zoning, which is where you take a defined smaller area and rezoning for a particular use, these two homes touch the R3 zone on the north. So that spot zoning is taken away, and that is a continual zone from that.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm Gail Ransler, and I live at 2830 Broadway. And my question is signage. Will there be an option for a sign to go there? And if so, where, size? Would it be something painted? Would it be electronic lights flashing? Can anybody give me any kind of idea on that?
I'd have to defer to the petitioner.
Hello. I'll be the owner of the property. I don't know exactly what kind of sign we'd put up, but we'd try to put up a nice sign. And I don't think it'll have, I don't know that it'll have lights or anything like that. I think it would go towards any, any, whatever restrictions you guys would have.
Sign ordinance would apply, yes.
Yeah. And our residential zones are somewhat constrictive as the type and kind of sign that you can put up as far as square footage and that sort of thing. Typically, they're only illuminated indirectly. And I'm not sure the exact square footage, but I'm thinking it's around eight max, maybe? I'd have to look at that to get an exact answer, but you would have to fall within that.
Yeah. So I think we'd be fine following anything that was fine there, and I don't think it's anything that anybody would be disagreeable with.
Right. But to your question, Mr. Ransler, no electronic message sign, nothing like that.
All right.
You guys have any other questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last call. I will conclude the public hearing. And Commissioners, do you have any questions, comments?
So, speaking on the sign, would there also be a sign on Jefferson? Or would it only be on Broadway for, for that particular use of those two properties?
Well, we really just haven't thought too much about the sign yet. So I don't have a good plan on where, I mean, we just want the most visible people to identify it, and that would, so it's hard for me to answer the question without really...
So most of your guests would come to the Broadway entrance?
I think they will be.
And then go?
The Jefferson, it might be, it's kind of tight the way that, I don't know if it's actually going to work for a, we thought about having them come in off of Jefferson because there's a little driveway there, and it's nice for unloading, but they might end up parking on the other side off of Broadway.
Commissioner Kayler, if I could address that very briefly, is if there was a sign that would be on the Jefferson side, that would be off-premise, so that would be limited to six square feet. So I can tell you that, that for sure.
Any other questions?
Josh, you mentioned about a person, an onsite person in your narrative. And I probably just missed, but I've read this thing three times while everybody's talking, and I can't find it in the written narrative. So where have I missed it?
It is...
I'm sorry.
It's under the conditional use portion of it, which would be the third paragraph down.
Oh, what page?
Oh, and innkeeper would reside?
Yes.
Unfortunately, the page is outnumbered. It's the one that begins with section 126-68 at the top.
Okay. It's, it's, it's fine. I'll try, I just couldn't find this part here. Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes, ma'am.
So I know, you know, the Jefferson Street Association was formed to keep Jefferson Street residential. And it was started after they tore down the VFW building and built People's Bank.
Which is right next to this, yes.
Right. So how does that play into Jefferson Street and their wanting to keep Jefferson residential?
Josh, do you have any comment on that?
Oh, I wanted to defer to you.
R3 is a residential zone. It's not commercial. The one's the first commercial zone.
So is the proposal for this piece of property, is it similar to the use of the women's club on Jeffers?
Hmm. That's just used as a meeting space, isn't it?
No, they rent.
Oh, they do?
Yeah, they have short-term rentals, and they have baby showers, wedding.
Sounds similar to what I'm reading here.
So is that just grandfathered in because it's been there so many years?
I don't know enough of that with that property. It really doesn't, I don't think it has any bearing on this.
But this would be similar to what, I'm talking about similarities between the two properties, since they're both on Jefferson.
Sounds similar, but I can't, I don't think any of us can confirm that. So it's only hearsay. Any other questions?
Josh, why are we, again, just for clarification, why are we adding the 2800 and 2807 together?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. That is so that the properties touch the R3 Medium Density Zone to the north. Just 2807 Broadway would not touch that property in itself. But by adding both properties together, there is a complete square that touches the R3 zoning to the north.
So the owner of 2800, is it, have they requested this as well?
Yes, they are part of the petition.
Very good questions. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I may be out of order. I just wanted to address Commissioner Kayler's concern about the sign.
Would you approach the podium and identify yourself?
Yes, sir. My name is Sarah Gibson. I'm a local real estate agent. My daughter Katie and I have the home listed at 2807 Broadway for sale. 2800 Jefferson, which is right behind this property, is, is the key piece to this property, getting the zoning that they need to enjoy the bed and breakfast status that they need. There's no intentions, no, I can't see the person even having permission to put a sign on 2800 Jefferson because they're not going to own that property. So the access to 2807 Broadway is off of 28th Street and off of Broadway. So that's the only place that signage would be. There would no, not be signage on Jefferson Street because the party would not have ownership of that.
Does that clear that up?
No.
Okay.
So, so they will own the house on Broadway, but they won't own the house on Jefferson?
That's correct. Two different owners of each property.
And, well, that leads to a question I had thought and talked myself out of. Are we doing a conditional use permit on 2800 Jefferson?
No, just 2807.
It's only on the Broadway property?
Yes.
That does clear that up. So thank you.
Thank you.
Josh, I got one more question.
Yes.
So what I'm hearing, the 2807 is condition, the sale of it is conditional on this rezoning?
I don't know about the sale, Ms. Gibson. That might be a question for you. The question was, is if the sale is conditional on the rezoning?
Yes. My name is Katie Gibson. I'm the other listing agent for 2807 Broadway, and we do currently have it under contract with a buyer, but that contract is contingent on being rezoned to R3.
Obviously, this does have a lot of arms and legs to it. So, any other questions? Mr. Summers, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ben Barry.
No.
Commissioner Carmen.
Aye.
Commissioner Griffin.
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler.
No.
Commissioner Morrison.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
No.
Chairman Wade.
Aye. My count is four to three. Is that right? It does pass. Thank you all very much.
All right. Our next item.
Pause for a minute while everybody...
Yes. All right. Our next item is for a right-of-way closure at 519 North Third Street. And I believe, Commissioner Carmen, you have this item?
I do.
But first, we have the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is for a right-of-way closure of North Third Street, which would be used in conjunction with the new hotel. The approximate area to be closed is 24,126 square feet. Since the hotel project is being fast-tracked, I think is probably the best word to use here. We have been working with them as far as getting items approved within what we can. The City of Paducah owns, of course, the flood wall and the lot currently where the new hotel will go, so we felt comfortable bringing a request to the Planning Commission to close North Third Street between Harrison Street and Executive Boulevard. Upon approval, a plat will be produced, which I will get Chairman Wade's signature on and then recorded. After that, the Engineering Department will take it to the Board of Commissioners to officially close the street at that point and transfer it to the hotel. So, Mr. Chairman, I will turn it back over to you for the public hearing.
All right. Commissioner Carmen, you read the motion.
Yes. I move that the commission adopt a resolution forwarding a positive recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to vacate and close approximately 24,126 square feet of North Third Street between Harrison Street and Executive Boulevard.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Since this does involve the closure of a street, we will now have a public hearing on this and ask anyone to speak positively or negatively in their comments to approach the podium, identify themselves, and make such comment. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak to this item? Hearing that, I'll declare the public hearing is closed. Now, commissioners, do you have any questions regarding this action?
I got a small one, and I'm all for it, don't get me wrong. But we do have a, we do have a pump station underground at about Executive, when Executive Boulevard and the street. I guess we're not going to give away the pump station to the hotel. I mean, and I don't think they would want to own it either, but I'd point that out.
Well, you are correct. And one of the questions I had is with the flood wall there, and the other thing is about easements. And I'm sure that'll be addressed in the plat.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Rhodes, I can address that a little bit. Is we have been in conversations with the engineering department over not only the lift station, but there's a new transformer there as well. And those will be retained on city right-of-way and not transferred to the hotel. Thank you.
And that's normal on any of these going forward, right?
Yeah, it would need to stay on city property so we can access it. And additionally, the right-of-way of the flood wall will remain intact as well.
Okay. I have a foggy memory of that, but just wanted to make sure it was still.
Any other questions in the commission, comments? Hearing that, Mr. Summers, would you call the roll please?
Commissioner Carmen?
Aye.
Commissioner Griffin?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler?
Aye.
Commissioner Morrison?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Benberry?
Aye.
Chairman Wade?
Aye. All right. The next item on the agenda involves 4051 and 4155 Olivet Church Road, a proposed rezoning from R1 low-density residential to M1 light industrial zone. And Mr. Summers, would you provide comment on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is for two different parcels. As mentioned, it is 4051 and 4155 Olivet Church Road. For some reason in the past, these parcels were never rezoned to a commercial or industrial type of zoning classification. However, the proposed use for future development could be multifamily, industrial, or commercial uses. The M1 zone is south of the property across a railroad track, so it would be an extension thereof. And the total acreage, including to the center line of the right-of-ways, is approximately 5.26 acres. And being close to Exit 3, a lot of motorists from the north part of McCracken County Metropolis, Vianna up that way, always or tend to use Exit 3 to get to the regional trade center. So this has a lot of traffic that flows by it, which makes it more conducive to an industrial or commercial classification. And Olivet Church Road had 4,977 vehicles a day in 2022. But we do anticipate that to increase, especially with the triple-rail mega-site and Amazon. That is both going to be two major traffic generators in the site or around the site, I should say. So it's highly unlikely that the property would redevelop as single-family or two-family based on location. Major changes of an economic, physical, and social nature have happened in the vicinity and will continue to happen. As mentioned, the Amazon warehouse will open soon, the triple-rail mega-site, the truck service center. There's new industrial developments down Cairo Road, and multifamily developments have been constructed as well. So this area has seen a lot of growth. And this would tee up this area to take advantage of that growth. And staff is recommending approval. So I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman, for the public hearing. And the petitioners are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Vice Chairman Morrison, I believe you have the motion on this?
Yes, sir. I move that this commission recommend approval to the board of commissioners and adopt a resolution recommending approval thereof of the requested MAP amendment from R1 low-density residential zone to M1 light industrial zone for property located at 4051 and 4155 Olivet Church Road. I further move this commission adopt the following findings of fact in support of said recommendation. One, the most recent traffic count was 4,977 vehicles a day in 2022. Two, due to location and traffic counts, the R1 low-density residential zone is inappropriate for this site. Three, the M1 light industrial zone is appropriate for this site. Four, new developments have and are being constructed in the immediate vicinity, which would cause these properties to be more conducive to industrial or commercial development. Five, the site is adjacent to the M1 zone on the south side. Therefore, spot zoning is negated. Six, new development on this site would help to further spur development in the vicinity on underutilized parcels. Seven, major changes of an economic, physical, and social changes have happened and will happen in the general vicinity. Eight, the site is adjacent to the industrial park west, which could lead to ancillary industrial development, which has happened nearby at 5510 Cairo Road.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Since this does involve a rezoning, a public hearing is convened and would ask anyone who has comments positively or negatively to come to the podium, identify yourself, and address the commissioners. Anyone? Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. And commissioners, do you have any questions? All right. Hearing no questions. Mr. Summers, would you call the roll please?
Commissioner Morrison?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Benberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Carmen?
Aye.
Commissioner Griffin?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler?
Aye.
Chairman Wade?
Aye.
All right. Does anyone else have any business for us? All right. Otherwise, we will declare this adjourned at 6:27. Our next scheduled meeting is December the 2nd, 2024. Thank you.